The meeting will come to order to avoid disruptions in our meeting and in respect to all attendees of the International Board of Trustees Meeting Chairs requires that all cell phones be turned off or silenced. If you must answer a cellphone, do so outside of the room, which you are currently seated in for the same reason. Please also be aware of any background noise, no matter how insignificant, which may inadvertently be transmitted during the meeting and cause a disruption. And this meeting is being broadcast at live on Zoom, recorded to be posted to YouTube later. Please make sure there is an appropriate background visible for the audience. This IBT meeting will be held online via a broadcast Zoom meeting. Any other recording, transmittals, or retransmittals of this International Board of Trustees meeting is not authorized. Any violations of this policy may be subjected to legal and disciplinary measures. The property proprietary rights of the of our corporation, our members need to be respected. But there are no objections, we will proceed with the meeting without informalities. Hearing no objections, we will begin the meeting. Okay, and we go to time for the roll call?
Oh, page three.
Oh, page three. Okay, hold on a minute here. There we go. At the June 30th, 2018 meeting of the International Board of Trustees, the bylaws Article 8, Section 3, was amended to read the proprietary seminar, proprietary seminar and IBT meeting may be combined for each of the three boards of the trustees meetings. The seminar and the IBT meeting have been combined for today. Propose rules for this Zoom IBT meeting are: Any member may speak during this meeting after being recognized by the chair. Members will have a chance to be heard. All speakers must give their name and office remarks are limited to three minutes, except where approved by the chair. Board members are to mute their microphones until recognized by the chair. Board members who want to ask a question or make a comment are to use the raised hand to provided on Zoom. Zoom should remain muted until called upon by the chair. Once recognized by the chair, board members are to unmute their microphones, present the question and comment, and mute their microphones again when they have finished talking. Lure of in-person participation. Members were able to submit questions or comments to the IBT through an online form voicemail or email. Forms, voicemails, and emails needed to be submitted before the start of the meeting and were distributed to the IBT. They will be addressed during the appropriate discussion. After each motion is presented, feedback will be requested from the International Board of Trustees, followed by the region vice presidents. If there's not any questions or comments from the Zoom audience, the discussion will end when the chair calls for the question and all raised hands will be lowered. Speakers may speak twice on each item, but those who wish to speak a second time must wait until all who wants to speak a first time have done so. A yellow card will be held up when the speaker has spoken for two minutes. When the three minutes have been used by the speaker, a red card will be held up. The speaker will stop. There will be a limit of 20 minutes for a discussion on each motion unless the chair extends that time. If a roll call vote is necessary, the International Recording Secretary will randomly call on board members. Microphones will be unmuted, record the vote, and then muted again once the vote is completed. When the chairs call for the question, only the trustees may vote. If there is no objection, these will be the rules of this meeting. Hearing no objection, these are the rules for this meeting. The secretary will call the roll.
President, Ty Mott.
Here.
First Vice President, Eric McHenry.
Here.
Second Vice President, Pear Hamquist.
Present.
Third Vice President, Karen Fisher. Well, I see her, but I don't hear her. Recording. Recording Secretary Linda Shelton here. Treasurer Trevor Lake.
Yeah.
Immediate past President Andrew Selking.
Here.
Region one President Doug Hart.
Present.
Region two President RJ Marquette.
Present.
Region three President Bill Wild.
Present.
Region four President Brad Briggs. Region five President Christopher Seplek. Region six President Larry Madden.
Here.
Region seven President Jane Carmichael.
Present.
Region eight President Greg Badner.
Here.
Region nine President Bill Miller.
Present.
Region ten President Kathy Giesi.
Present.
Region eleven President Ken Johansson. Region twelve President Laverne McHenry.
Here.
Parliamentarian Joanne Miller.
Present.
Corporate manager Lori Plummer.
Here.
Trustee Justin Humphries. We have some missing presidents.
Okay. If any region presidents are not in attendance, you will need to follow. Okay. Hold on a minute here. According with the Constitution and bylaws or Constitution, Article nine, Board of Trustees, Section one, Item B, which states in part, "In the event the region president is unable to be present at the meeting of the Board of Trustees, the next ranking region vice president shall sit with the board at that meeting as a voting member representing that region in all matters coming before the board." It's the first VP for, let me get back over here.
Four.
For four? Are they here? Not hearing anything. Okay. Then we'll check with region five.
Wait, back up, Ty.
Okay.
Is the second Vice President of region?
Oh, second Vice President for region four on the call?
No.
Nope, okay. Region five, First Vice President, are you on the call? Second Vice President?
I'm promoting him right now.
Okay.
John, can you hear us?
Good morning. Can you hear me, John Deegan?
Yes, we can, John. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, and region eleven President, our Vice President?
Even Paris been promoted right now.
Okay.
Yes, I'm on the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay. Region four will not be represented at the meeting.
I'm here.
There's Brad.
Oh, Brad's here now. Okay. Thank you, Brad, for joining us. I stand corrected.
I have 21 in attendance, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Joanne, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to make sure Linda reported to you how many were present.
Yes. Okay. Quorum is present. A proposed agenda for this meeting is before you without objection, this will be the agenda.
I have one correction or addition.
Yes, Joanne.
Um, following the approval of the minutes, there will be an executive committee meeting report of the May 16th, 2022 executive committee meeting.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay. The minutes of the January 20th, 2022 IBT hybrid meeting have been distributed electronically to the members of this board. Without objection, we shall dispense with the reading of the minutes. Hearing none, we will dispense with the reading of the minutes. Are there any corrections in these minutes? Since there's no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. Next will be the executive committee meeting report for May 16th, 2022. Karen Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, April 20th, at a regular meeting of the executive committee, the topic of delegate voting was an agenda item. This was brought to the EC for a decision due to concerns about timing and making sure that we could have everything in place, procedures, equipment, technical support, et cetera, which would be needed to support a Zoom type meeting in Freiburg. After much discussion, a motion was made to not change our voting methods, which require in-person presence, i.e. keep the process as in the past. Discussions included: One, when asked, Lori reported that there were 12 to 14 clubs who did not have a member registered for the international rally. Not all of these were from the West Coast. Two, discussion was held on whether this was an abnormally high number of local clubs without a delegate, or if it was similar to the number of local clubs without a delegate in the past. It was thought that approximately 10% of the local clubs did not have a delegate in at the 2018 international rally in Salem. At that time, approximately 120 local clubs or 12 missing delegates, and that possibly six to seven did not have a delegate at the 2021 international rally in Lebanon. The percentage of local clubs without a delegate in 2022 is slightly higher than these two examples. Three, an example was given of a region president who helped secure an affiliate member for a local club who did not have a member planning to attend the international rally in Lebanon, and was able to act as the delegate for that club. I'm sorry. Okay, so the affiliate acted as the delegate. This is a viable option for any club without a member planning to go to Freiburg. Four, concerns were raised regarding verification of a delegate who is present online and the need for these delegates to be present during the entire meeting. Five, concern was expressed that by rushing a change through to fix the issue of clubs not being able to vote, we could be accused of trying to stack the deck for passage or defeat of two important issues regarding changes to the constitution. By leaving the voting as-is, some local clubs may not be able to send or find a delegate to attend the meeting, but these same rules have existed for several years and everyone is aware of them. Six, yes, the technology exists for a Zoom type meeting to take place, but with verification and all the other stuff needed to do this correctly, we are putting an awful lot of work on headquarters and the people behind the scenes so that we can run the meeting. Seven, it was expressed that we should deal with this type of issue before it becomes an issue, be proactive, rather than we are than when we are facing a vote on such important issues, being reactive. The motion passed unanimously. One person was absent from the meeting. Due to concerns expressed by some members of the IBT, an emergency meeting was held on the emergency meeting of the executive committee was held on May 16th to review this topic. A motion was made to rescind the action taken on April 20th and refer the matter to the IBT. Discussion revolved around most of the same concerns raised at the previous meeting. The motion was defeated.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
During this scheduled meeting of the IBT, there will be no additional reports. We will move on to the business at hand. There is no unfinished business. There is two, three, three items, or three items of new business.
Well, the others are going to come up at the front of the floor.
Okay, there's one item of new business then. Motion one is from Karen Fisher and is entitled "Transfer Common Sense for Kids Fund Balance and Responsibility from Wally Byam Caravan Club International to the Wally Byam Caravan Club International Foundation." Karen, will you please read your motion?
You're muted.
You're muted, Karen.
Sorry. I moved that all responsibility for administering the Common Sense for Kids program and associated funds on deposit with Wally Byam Caravan Club International be transferred to the WBCCI Foundation. A restricted fund within the foundation is to be created for this program.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Go wild, Region three.
Okay, go wild, Region three for a second. Okay, please read your proposed impact, background, and financial impact statements.
On purpose or impact, this is to provide a method for donations to Common Sense for Kids to be considered tax deductible. Background: Common Sense for Kids started in 1997 with the suggestion from the granddaughter of a member who had attended several international rallies. Her suggestion was for the youth to collect change from international rally attendees and use it to benefit a child with special needs near the international rally location. Grants from Common Sense are to cover expenses other than medical, such as travel, lodging, et cetera. And so it started. Since its inception, Common Sense for Kids has collected over $170,000. The program was originally managed by Linda Amy, Chair of the Family and Youth Standing Committee. In recent years, the goal was to give a minimum of $5,000 to the recipient. All monies collected at an international rally are intended to be distributed at that rally. Other monies collected throughout the years were deposited at headquarters and kept track of through accounting practices. If monies collected at the international rally did not reach the goal, the shortage was taken from monies previously collected. Currently, the amount of Common Sense Fund equals $19,199.27. Additional interest will be paid at the end of May. If this motion passes, the money would be transferred to the foundation after the interest is paid. Currently, donations to Common Sense for Kids are not tax deductible as Wally Byam Caravan Club International is not a 501(c)(3) organization. If the monies and responsibility for the program are transferred to the foundation, donations to Common Sense would become tax deductible. If approved, the money would be placed in a restricted fund within the foundation so that the money could only be used to meet the original intent of the program. Donations designated for Common Sense would be added to the restricted fund and only used as designated. In addition, in addition to taking on the responsibility for managing the funds, the foundation would take on the responsibility of searching for and selecting the recipients each year. Financial impact: No impact to Wally Byam Caravan Club International. However, balance sheet, which currently shows Common Sense for Kids Fund, would be reduced by the amount transferred to the foundation.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? From the region vice presidents?
You missed Bill Wild.
Bill Wild.
The effective date on this, please, so we can know whether this would impact taxes this year or next year.
Go ahead, Karen.
Um, I suggested that we wait till the interest that gets paid at the end of May be credited to the account and then it be transferred to the foundation. We are in anticipation of a positive vote on this issue. I have someone that's currently looking into potential recipients in the Freiburg area already, so basically by the first of June, it should be considered a donation is tax deductible.
Okay. Any questions or discussions concerning the motions from the region vice presidents?
Barb Fuller.
Barb Fuller? Can you hear us?
You hear me? Okay. I, I, I'm just trying to understand the history of it. I, obviously, it's been done by youth and family. Has youth and family, are they aware of this not being part of their future and all? I'm just trying to, I hate to take away from one division of our group and giving it now to the foundation. As long, I just want to make sure everybody's on board. That's it.
Yes, Karen.
Um, we currently do not have a youth and family standing committee chair. And it was decided last year in Lebanon, when we also did not have a standing committee chair, that we would not ask the youth committee chair for the rally to take on this responsibility as it was his first year doing that job. I would like to, unless somebody objects, ask the youth committee in Freiburg to work with us as we collect donations at the doors.
Thank you, Karen. John Deegan?
Good morning, everybody. Just a question on this. Does this comply with IRS guidelines?
Karen?
Yes, as far as I know, it does.
Okay, Lori?
Just a comment that we've been trying to rebuild the youth program for the rally and to encourage more families and grandkids to attend. At this time, in that scope, collecting funds isn't part of, part of that new scope for, for Common Sense.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions or discussions from the audience? Anybody else there, Lori? Nope, okay.
No.
This motion will require a majority vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion proposed transferring the monies from the Common Sense for Kids Fund from the Wally Byam Caravan Club International to the WBCCI Foundation. Are you ready for the question? The vote is now on motion one as read. Without objection, motion one as read will be approved. Hearing none, motion one is approved.
Thank you all.
And then is there any further new business? Yes, Kathy Giesi.
Yes, give me one second here. I have a motion that I would like to present as new business. May I begin?
Yes, you may begin, Kathy.
Yes. And my apologies, I'm still kind of new at this, so please tell me if I read things in the wrong order. The summary is that consistent with the support for electronic voting by IBT members as well general members, this motion requests a development of a process by which delegates may vote electronically. The motion is I move the WBCCI International Board of Trustees directs us to develop and communicate a method for remote participation by delegates in discussions during the delegates meeting, which shall include the validation and remote voting of delegates either by phone or other technology before May 31st, 2022.
Hold on one minute, Kathy.
And purpose.
Kathy, hold on one minute. Is there a second for this?
Pardon?
Is there a second for this motion?
I second.
Okay, Laverne McHenry, go ahead, Kathy. Can you please read your proposed impact and background and financial impact statement?
Yes, background is the WBCCI International Board of Trustees voted to support electronic voting by both the International Board of Trustees and general members. The executive committee voted to restrict the delegate voting to in-person only. This motion shall support the option of electronic voting by delegates consistent with the current WBCCI constitution, bylaws, and Ohio state law as advised by WBCCI external counsel. The financial impact is minimal.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? Go ahead, Brad Briggs.
Brad Briggs, Region four. I, this is from the minutes from the last executive or last two executive committee meetings. They said that it was a burden on the headquarters, and I just would like Lori to speak on that burden so we're aware of what they are.
We've got it pretty proficient with Zoom over the last several years. I don't see it as being a huge burden at all. Of course, our role here is to support our members as much as possible. So so I, it's very manageable if, if we have still the current volume, I mean, if we have 100 and some wanting to vote, then that may be a big burden, but currently I see it being very manageable.
Okay. Larry Madden?
Larry Madden, Region six, President. I guess the purpose of this motion would be to circumvent the bylaws that are now in place for delegates to vote at the international rally electronically as instead of being in person. Is that correct?
Kathy Giesi, do you want to answer that?
Yes, and according to external legal counsel, there's nothing in our constitution that prohibits this. And so I don't know that I see it as a circumventing it. I would just see it as allowing those members that are not going to be able to have their votes presented, to have their votes presented.
Okay, thank you. You know, years ago, when we had to cancel the international rally due to the worldwide pandemic, this was also accomplished because business has to continue. But that was kind of like a once-in-a-lifetime situation. The current bylaws mandate that the delegates are present during the international rally. And I think that's important. I understand it's a burden for folks, myself included, with the price of gas and the location of the international rally. But I really think if we continue to go around or avoid the bylaws, what's the purpose of having bylaws? I mean, just eliminate the bylaw altogether, that you have to be there, which is part of the international rallies votes, the delegates' votes at the international rally in Freiburg. But the standing rule is that the delegates have to be present, and I sympathize because I get it. It's expensive to get there, but I still think that we should follow the bylaws as they are today. That's my point.
Thank you, Larry. Tom Smithson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could address this question briefly. The Constitution says present, and this issue came up at the executive council meeting, and I was the one that asked for a legal interpretation of that. Our lawyer clearly indicated that Ohio corporate code for nonprofits provides that if the governing body decides that present is by electronic means, that is present, the same as if you were physically there. So that, that point is really kind of moot. Thank you.
Okay, Laverne McHenry?
Right, I, I, I pretty much echo what Tom is saying. We're, we're not changing anything. We're not going around bylaws. We're just asking that this process be allowed at this meeting. So there's, we're not, we're not, our bylaws says presence. It doesn't say you have to be physically present. We've done this several times, not just under COVID. We did it under travel restrictions because the, the Canadian border was not open. And so we're saying, you know, we have travel restrictions, the price of fuel for people on the West Coast. Turns out I have, I actually have another club that does not have a delegate in Region 12. So I'm, I'm back to scrambling to find a, basically a warm body so that a club can present their votes. And somehow, I, I, I'm struggling to understand that that's the nature of our bylaws is to say we just need a warm body versus an actual representation of what our members are voting for. That's it.
Thank you for Laverne. Kathy Giesi?
Yes, and my point as well, both by Tom and Laverne, is that present has been interpreted as someone there to vote. It does not have to be in person. And as we are moving more and more towards electronic voting and supporting electronic voting, the club, three of the seven clubs in my region do not have anyone going, and it's for various reasons. They don't have any affiliates attending. I have tried to fill. One of the presidents said, president said, "It is our right as a WBCCI member that we are allowed to vote." And I'm struggling to say, "Well, no, not really. It is not your right, unless you've got somebody of a warm body there," as Laverne put it. And I'm struggling to say, well, no, not really, it is not your right unless you've got somebody of a warm body there, as Laverne put it.
Thank you, Kathy Giesi. Eric McHenry?
Yeah, I think it's already been addressed, Larry, but I just have to toss my sense in about presence, you know, because this was looked at about a month and a half ago, this question of present at a meeting came up. And and as they've said, this is no change to the bylaws. And we know that already because even in this meeting we're in right now, to be counted as part of the quorum, which you were, you have to be present, and you are. So, and we did this in Savannah also for this board as well. So this concept of presence being narrowly defined as in a physical room, we haven't operated that way in a couple of years, especially for the, for these types of meetings. I think that that's the thing that I would tell people is that, no, absolutely not, we're not looking at changing any bylaws, we're not looking at getting around any bylaws. We're looking to accommodate people who, I think is reasonable, expectation of trying to drop $5,000 or so just to vote is problematic. So I really stress that if in these discussions, we're, we are clear that this is not going around our current bylaws. And again, that's been reinforced by our corporate attorney. I would also just in closing say that there is no doubt that this is unique. I mean, we all know that, you know, I've been in the club for 14, 15 years, there's been nothing in front of the delegates that has encouraged them to vote as much as what we're talking about in July, nothing, you know, we've done significant effort of reaching out to the delegates, to the members. Some will vote yes, some really want to vote no, and I think it's a bit, I think it's a bit misstating to say this is business as usual. So we finally have an engaged membership, right, which is great, is what we want. I think every rally I've been to the last two months, and probably all of you, you've had this discussion with your members. So this is a big deal, and I think that if there's, well, there's any reason to to allow presence to be consistent with what we do on this board, it's certainly this, because it is a challenge, you know, for to travel from Texas or from Florida or from the West Coast, or frankly, some of the other clubs as well. So I just wanted to toss that in, is that, you know, it's not just a legal interpretation of presence, it's also, you know, why not, right? Let our members vote easier, why encumber them with not being able to vote? So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Doug Hart?
Thanks, Ty. My only outstanding concern was one the Lori addressed, and that's been put to bed. But I'd just like to say that I would support anything that'll improve the ability of our members to vote or be represented to vote, and this clearly accomplishes that in a very simple way. And so I encourage everyone to support this.
Thank you, Doug. Karen Fisher? You're muted, Karen.
Sorry, I keep trying to obey all the rules and then forget to turn myself on. I have several comments I would like to make. Yes, we have the technologies, but if you remember back to Savannah, we did have some issues getting a meeting started, and it delayed everything by about 30 minutes. As I remember, it may have been more, may have been slightly less. Yes, we finally got it resolved, we can try to check for those things in the past, but they are, again, if we do this in the future, but we know that things happen, so I'm just going to bring up that concern. I'm concerned about the timing stated in the motion. May 31st is only two weeks from today. There's a week, there's a full weekend, any holiday, three-day weekend in there, plus the weekend, the regular weekend, or let's say the holiday weekend is the opening, grand opening of the Heritage Center at Airstream. And I know that Lori is involved in working with Airstream Club on that as well. So next is the use of affiliates. I understand the concern that a president feels he should be able to represent his club. But if he can't, he or she cannot make it, there is an option to send another member or an affiliate member. And if he's concerned that that affiliate may not know the club, the affiliate can be instructed to stand up prior to a vote, ask for a recess, and he would have some amount of time to call the president, explain the situation, and get directions from them and how to vote for their club. And finally, I disagree with Eric on the major issues. If you remember back several years, the motorhome issue was a huge issue and brought out a lot of feelings from different people on whether to allow or not allow motorhome. And so I think you can't say that this is the first main issue that we've had. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you. Kathy Giesi? Kathy, you're muted.
My apologies. Yeah, and all I, if Lori is saying she thinks that they can do it, I'm going to trust Lori on this one. I'm also saying if she comes back in two weeks and says, we just cannot make this happen. But what we're doing right now is throwing out the baby with the bathwater. We're, we just need to explore that it can be done. I trust Lori implicitly, if she says it can be done, then it can be done.
Thank you, Kathy. Bill Wild?
I find myself in a bit of a dilemma here. I think we have two questions. One, one of the key arguments that I heard against this was no guarantee that the individual participate for the entire session. Here's all the comments, is able to consider any amendments. We have a delegate form that has to be signed by a unit president for either themselves or for their alternate, that they have to have certified when they arrive at the rally, and they have to have their ticket, so to speak, to be seated for the delegates meeting. If in fact this goes forward, then I would suggest that that delegate form include under that signature, a certification or an agreement to participate for the entire period so that we can eliminate that concern. I know it's possible somebody could still zone out, but there's probably some people sitting in the room that don't, aren't paying attention to. I just, I think that we have to trust our presidents to a certain extent and say that if they are going to attend, that they will attend. My second concern is the greater one. The question arose at the beginning of this conversation when, at the forum, as to which body would, should probably have addressed this issue. That is to say, whether or not it should have been an EC issue or it should have been an IT, IBT issue. I have a real hard spot with going up against our leadership, which is kind of what appears to be happening here. But if our leadership were to concur that perhaps this should have been an issue that was decided by the IBT, that would give them the opportunity to retract their opinion and let this go forward without setting the precedent of the of the region president overriding REC.
Thank you, Bill Wild. Jane Carmichael?
Good morning. I have a question about the phrase in the motion of minimal. I don't trust that word, never have, for costs. However, wouldn't there be total conferencing? Wouldn't there be maybe a new forum? Wouldn't the credentials council have a little more effort of work getting those credentials accomplished? Wouldn't there be potentially with the absent delegates, a need to verify that that affiliate in fact has been an affiliate? Not just someone who was recruited. Someone who is absent at the meeting will miss a lot of the communication that's going on. I support the EC. If I read this correctly, it's been defeated twice by our leaders. Once, let me look at my notes, April 20, and once, May 16, and we're here again. Maybe this is a great idea, maybe it should not be by May 31, maybe it should be during next year or whenever. Constitutional delegates are going to go away anyway, aren't they? I'm a delegate for the members at large, so I could be absent. Or my second vice can't make it, or my first vice, how does this ripple down? I can't support it at this point.
Thank you. Lori Plummer?
Thanks, I just want to address a few things, the mechanical side of it and what what transpires actually during the delegates meeting when it's in person. Yes, we send out forms to all the local clubs. No, they do not bring a signed form with, from their president to the actual rally. They will come to the office, and we, we are handing out forms left and right. So it's not as secure as maybe some think it has been in the past. So mechanically, we already have a large account, so it would not add to our cost. It'd be simply verifying what delegate, what clubs need to go virtual. It would be on the Zoom platform. They would either have, they can either phone in or video in, either way, they'd have a participant's code, which would be a secure code only for that individual, things of that nature. So the mechanics of making it happen are minimal. I don't say easy, nothing is ever easy, but it is very doable. So those mechanics don't, I mean, they can be discussed, but they're resolved, so that's it.
Thank you, Lori. Kathy Giesi?
Yes, and again, this motion was to address what I heard as the main objection. There was some discussion about tradition, and then we all decided, well, not all of us decided, but the majority of us decided that the main, the main point here is that we are encouraging members to vote, and this sends, this is bad optics. This sends that, yes, you can vote, but we're going to make some hoops. There are not affiliates available for several of my clubs, there is just no other option, we've explored it. So the main objection was that the mechanics of it might be difficult. This, this motion is just so that Lori and her team can look at the mechanics. What I'm hearing from her is, yeah, this is not going to be a major thing. Yes, it is going to require some effort, but this is not something that's insurmountable.
Thank you, Kathy. Eric?
And two topics. First, it's come up a couple of times that the leadership of the club, I guess, but that means the EC didn't agree. I disagree with that premise, you know, if elected president, you know, that's the leadership of this club is the IBT. I mean, we are the leadership of this club. As we've talked over the last five months, my vote is the same as your vote, and your vote, and your vote, and your vote. Right, you guys, the region presidents, I think acronically stated, understand the local clubs better and are on this board because you understand your local clubs. At the international officers, we're focused more on the large club in entirety, right? But you guys understand your local club, your vote is equal. There is no leadership of a club to go against. I mean, that's why we're talking about it now, because we make the decisions at the IBT. I think that we sort of know this from past discussions. I was thinking about the discussions that we had in Savannah about the COVID policy, great discussion, right? And we as a group decided to go a certain way, totally fine. The second thing, so anyway, that's my thought about it, you know, this is a group that decides, it's not the EC. The EC has actually very limited decision-making capability, and I think that that's something we're learning through this. The second thing is that I really am just asking for, I would guess, I'll say the words in my mind, a compassionate approach to this. We know that we can make it happen, Lori has to state it that. We know that it's within our current bylaws, we've heard that from our corporate attorney. And so it feels a bit, to be frank, not compassionate to ask someone from Las Vegas or Montana to seriously drive 4,000, 5,000 miles, which is probably two weeks of their time in vacation, just because we, we choose not to let them vote. I look at the, I look at the the weight of these issues on someone. Sure, it may be more complicated for that person to attend a day on a Zoom call, but I guarantee you that person would prefer spending a day on a Zoom call than two weeks driving back across country to place that vote. And so because we have the technology, because it's in our current bylaws, because it's easy to do, really, what is the downside? And also because we've established a precedent. I think everyone knows that we're meeting electronically. We as a board have been meeting electronically for well over a year. I think most of us really enjoy it. A number of you took the opportunity in Savannah to not have to drive to Savannah for the midwinter IBT, it works fine. So why would we say it's okay for the board, but not okay from a poor delegate, you know, to spend that much time on the road for no, I would say, hard, fast reasons? That's my ask of us to be a little more compassionate to the people that don't have any options to to vote. So, anyway, thanks, that's it for me for now.
Larry Madden?
This is more of an educational question on my behalf. This is the first time I've received a motion from the maker of the motion in an email, I got it last night from Kathy, and I appreciate getting it, but in the, in the president's officers classes we've had at the international rallies, it's always been explained that the process for this motion would be, if you wanted to make a motion, it was sent to Lori Plummer. And from Lori would then send it to Joanne and to Tom to verify that the formatting was correct, the wording was correct, that kind of stuff, and then it would be put on the agenda for the IBT. To my knowledge, this motion hasn't been on the IBT, as that I can see, the agenda. So for educational purposes, am I wrong in that? Or is it that somebody can put a motion forth from the floor as long as it's been through Joanne and Tom and Lori to make sure the format's correct? Thanks for your help.
Joanne, do you want to speak on that?
Anyone can make a motion from the floor, but the problem with that is, as you said, there's no guarantee that it is written correctly, or there is the correct information in it, or they're requesting the correct things, because neither Tom nor I have had a chance to review this. So they take a chance in presenting it from the floor, which is their right. Anyone can make a motion from the floor.
Thank you. Yep.
I was asked a question about the language of that motion, so I did have some input to it.
And I was not.
Thank you. Anything else, Tom?
No, no, sir.
Joanne, or Karen?
Just a question, does that change the requirements as far as how many votes are required to pass a motion that it came from the floor and was not submitted in advance?
That coming from the floor would be required two-thirds vote of the committee. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Okay, Parrot?
Yeah, I just want to state my personal opinion is that I don't think that this discussion is counterproductive to any discussion that has taken place at the EC. We all work towards the same goal of helping our members, and I think this is a very good discussion to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Parrot. Any questions from the region and vice presidents on this motion? From the audience? Okay. This motion requires two-thirds of the vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion proposed directing staff to developing communicated method for remote participation by the delegates at the constitutional delegate meeting. Are you ready for the question? Vote is now on Kathy Giesi's motion two as read. Without an objection, motion two as read will be approved.
I object.
Yes, Karen?
I object.
Okay. If there's an objection, the roll call voting will be in random order. Okay, roll call voting will be in random order sequence. The vote, go ahead with, let's see here, hold on one minute here, skip something. Okay, roll call voting, yeah, and the vote will be yes and no's, and vote will be yes and no's if the motion passes. So Linda Shelton, do you want to begin doing the roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Eric McHenry.
I vote yes on the motion.
Bill Miller.
No.
Greg Badner.
I vote yes.
Larry Madden.
No.
Per Hamquist.
I vote yes.
Linda Shelton, no. Kathy Giesi.
I vote yes.
Karen Fisher.
No.
RJ Marquette.
Yes.
Oh, just a second. Got to. I forgot who's standing in for Ken Johansson.
Stephen Parr.
Parr.
Stephen Parr, okay. Stephen Parr.
I vote yes.
Christopher Steplek.
That will be.
Don Deegan.
Don Deegan. Thank you.
We, yes.
Doug Hart.
Yes.
Jane Carmichael.
No.
Trevor Lake.
No.
Andrew Selking.
No.
Bill Wild.
I'm struggling. I abstain.
Laverne McHenry.
I vote yes.
Brad Briggs.
No.
We have nine yeses, eight no's, and one abstain.
Okay, they needed two-thirds of the vote for this in the affirmative to pass. So this did not pass. Is there any further business?
Excuse me, what did you say, Ty?
It was eight yeses, and it had to be two-thirds of vote of the of the majority.
Why would it have to be two-thirds majority?
Cam wasn't submitted ahead of time.
Because it wasn't submitted, yo, right ahead of time of this thing. It wasn't on the agenda. It came from the floor.
It's the content of what it's asking also. Tom?
I'm sorry, I swear you wanted, I would disagree, but that's all right.
There was no prior, really, there was no prior official notification that this motion was going to come forward. I believe according to the date on the email to Lori, it was sent to her on the 16th, which was yesterday.
Eric?
No, I I agree. I just, this is more of an education for me, because I may have to be doing this in the future. Because it doesn't involve involve policy or bylaws or constitution, is it still have to be the two-thirds?
It, the reason it's two-thirds is because there was no official notice.
Okay, so it's a timing aspect.
It's a timing aspect.
Yep. Great. Thanks, Joanne.
Anybody else? Bill Wild?
Joanne, could you by chance be able to cite where that two-thirds requirement is stated? There seems to be some concern or disagreement between the members about that.
I would have to look up the exact citing in in Robert. I had looked at so many other things. I did not earmark that page in case that was a question, so I can get back to you and the rest of the board. If that's agreeable to you.
It is agreeable to me. If you should perchance find that this is a majority vote, not a two-thirds vote, then it would be appropriate for the for the president to make that known and let it known, let it be known that the vote or the motion carried, if that were the case, we'll just have to wait and see what you what you found.
Okay, Brad Briggs?
I I would be in favor of this motion and second IBT in Freiberg. I think it's a good idea, but I think the timing's not good. That's why we voted no.
Thank you. Andy Selking.
Um, I just want to say, I've done this enough times. This is not the first time that something's come forward and one of the thresholds that this club have and and is in Robert's Rules of Order is that if you bring up something from the floor or wait till the last second to get this done now instead of just a simple majority, you now have a two-thirds majority to get most things passed. So this is, I've seen this happen many, many times, and that's why it's always a a roll of the dice if you wait till the last second to try and try and do something, because now instead of just winning by one vote, you now have to get two-thirds of the vote, and it makes it much, much harder. And it's just, it's part of the rules that we've been abiding by and most groups abide by all the time. It's nothing new, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Andy. Laverne McHenry.
Well, so question, I I get that the motion was officially just written, but this has, I requested this a while ago for my clubs. So it it became a motion because of all the obstacles. It wasn't because it wasn't a topic back then. I sent a message out to the full IBT because we couldn't get this going. So it's, we're going to defeat this because of the technicality. I mean, we've talked about this. This isn't a new request. I I'm confused as to why we can't make traction on something that is just requesting a process for those that cannot be there. That I'm I'm confused by this this technicality here.
Okay. Okay, Kathy Giesi?
Yeah, I I have to have to agree with Laverne, and this this is part of my educational process, too. So was it supposed to have been 48 hours in advance, 72, 96, 120? Or in going forward in the future, I mean, the reason why it came in at the last minute was I wanted to get input so that I did it correctly, and I did submit it. You know, once I got that input. So what 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 are the rules? And maybe that's something that Joanne, when she lets us know, when she cites whatever it is in Robert's Rules of Orders. But yeah, I I think for the educational process, I'd really like to know what would have been considered acceptable.
Okay, Andy Selking?
Let me educate a little bit. Lori sends out stuff all the time to us that any motion, there's a deadline. She sent that out a long time ago. And usually that's about a month or maybe a couple of weeks beforehand. But for it to be considered, for Tom to have time to look at it, for our parliamentarian to have time to look at it, it needs to be turned in by a specific date. Once you pass that date, now all of a sudden, that threshold jumps to, you know, two-thirds majority, so that if you turned it in a month ago, your motion probably would have passed because you probably would have won nine to eight, but because it was waited till the last second, now you got to do the two-thirds, and now all of a sudden, and that's, you know, that's just part of the rules, and sorry that no one in this group seems to know that, but this has been a very educational process, and we really do need to pay attention when Lori sends out stuff to all of us that you know, she wants our reports. She wants the motions, and that way we have time to digest, we have more time to discuss, and it just makes for a better flow and a better process. Hope that helps.
Well, and and if if I can jump in again on that as well, we just talked about this. It wasn't even 30 days ago. This was just a recent decision that we found out, and I accidentally found out about it. It wasn't, it wasn't sent out. It wasn't distributed at all. So my apologies for the last minute on it. But I didn't find out about it until very, very recently.
Find out about what, Kathy? Just clarify that for everybody.
Oh, the executive committee had decide even though legal counsel was consulted and said it would be okay, that the executive committee had made the decision that it was not going to be okay. I mean, I literally stumbled across that decision. It it was not sent out to the presidents.
If I remember right, I sent it a letter or notice to you and Laverne McHenry out there that said that that was what we had decided on.
Yes, but only after we asked about it. It was not, we were not notified about it. We asked about.
If I remember right, that'd be the 22nd of the month that that was sent out on, but I'll double check on that and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay. Karen Fisher. You're muted, Karen.
I want to point out that the motions don't have to be perfect when they get submitted. If you go back to my motion regarding common sense, you'll see an R2 in the file name. Because I submitted it, Joanne and Tom came back and asked for some changes. I submitted it. There were additional changes requested. So it, the process, the point is that, you know, get it in whatever format it's in, and you do have an opportunity to fine tune and make it better before it gets distributed to the ID IBT to be voted on.
Thank you. Laverne?
Again, this is like the chicken or the egg. How could this motion have been submitted 30 days, whatever many days ago, when we did not know that the decision from the EC was going to shut it down? How could we have created a motion before it needed to be created? I'm I'm confused by this. It seems that we're going to be defeated on the technicality of the chicken or the egg. So I'm, and I I just don't understand this.
Okay, well, I'm going to look that up for you a minute. I'll tell you what day I sent that to you. Kathy Giesi, Giesi, excuse me. Nope. Bill Wild?
Mr. President, may I read to you a couple of paragraphs from Robert Rules of Orders, possibly to add some clarification here?
Yes, you can.
Under the voting section in Roberts, it speaks after putting the putting the question. It says the chairperson then counts and announces the votes. Usually, a motion needs a simple majority to pass, but some need a two-thirds, 66% majority to pass, as explained previously. The previously refers to the paragraph in Robert's Rules concerning enacting motions. This is a little bit long, but I'll be as quick as I can. For an assembly to enact or approve the motion, the assembly needs to vote on it. Usually, a majority of vote is needed to enact or approve the motion. However, certain motions require a two-thirds majority of voters to approve the motion. These motions include include motions that, and there are several bullet points, suspend or modify a rule of order, prevent the introduction of a question for consideration, close, limit, or extend the limits of debate, close nominations, polls, or otherwise limit voting, or take away membership or an office. None of those would appear to apply to this situation. I am not stating a for or against on this. I am reading to you the rules according to Robert's Rules. Thank you.
Okay. Just to clarify one thing, I sent the notice to Kathy and Laverne on the 25th of April that the EC decided to do their vote on the delegates. So that was sent out to them on the 25th. Eric?
I would say I, my experience with this is aligned with Bill said, but I think Joanne's got her hand up, and she's the official on this one, so I'll just see to Joanne. Thank you.
Joanne?
I just, Bill, would you tell me where you were reading, please?
I am reading from the Robert Rules of Order Quick Study, which is what I use for my region. I'm not reading from the full book, so I can't give you the page number out of the actual book. This is a summary document that is like Robert's Rules for Dummies.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I I was just going to say that. That's why I asked the question about, because this doesn't affect current policies or bylaws or constitutions. And my understanding had always been with Robert said, for sure, you're absolutely right. If it's a change to policy, bylaws, motions, Andy's right, it requires a two-thirds vote if brought up late or in an emergency vote. But because this is a matter of practice, to Bill's point, I I didn't think that it fell within the two-thirds, but I think that Joanne's going to research it, and I'm comfortable with with whatever answer after research provides. I think that we should have a contingency plan, because I think I would imagine Joanne wants to look at this in some detail. And so we do have a contingency plan of what happens if further research either supports or says, yes, it's okay, or not okay. What do we do then? How do we get instructions to Lori's team, et cetera?
Thank you, Eric. Lori?
I just want to make a statement. I'm I'm a little disappointed because I don't feel like we're representing our members as we should. We've had people, clubs reach out to us. So as they do, and when they reach out to us being upset, feeling that their vote isn't going to count. Because again, my team has worked extremely hard at trying to get our members to engage in these constitutional amendments. I feel like we've done that job because we have more people asking questions now than we have in the past. And when and they want their votes to be heard, I mean, we'll be pushing them back to the board to answer those questions. So that's just a statement I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Okay. So Joanne will get back to us on that information. And then we will move on to. Is there any further new business? Yes, Eric?
Yeah, I I had an easy one, I think. I I think, Ty, if you're okay, I can forward this to the board. So our ITC Information Technology Committee, Mark Knightam, Chair, he's been working hard to understand what options our club has with our Google email accounts that are, we have about 350 or 360 Google mail accounts that are local clubs use for a variety of communications, and some of these as well. I think pretty much everyone knows that that Google has said, sorry, the free plan, you're no longer grandfathered into club. And so the plan had been to reduce the number of email accounts and switch to a different mail service. And I, because this will affect the local clubs in a big way, some will be happy, some won't care, some will not be happy, as always. I'd love to get the board input on this so to Mark, and so Mark and his ITC team can make a decision which way to go. So perhaps if I send it to you, Ty, or to Lori, to send that document out for Mark, or what do you what do you want, Ty? What do you prefer?
I think that, Lori, can you send that document out to everybody?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Okay. We will now have announcements from the board members. Please be mindful of the time. As a visual reminder of the time, the chair asks. Oh, hearing none, it may 17.22 is adjourned. Okay, now we will have announcements from the board members. Please be mindful of the time. As a visual reminder of the time, the chair asked that a yellow card be held up at the two-minute mark, a red card at the three-minute mark. Let's start with Region 12.
Um, I have nothing to report.
I can understand that. Okay, Region 11? Do we have Region 11 here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Okay, Region 11 has nothing to report.
Okay, Region 10? Okay, Region 10?
Region 10 reports, we are deep into the season. Our big region rally is coming up June 1st. I'm very pleased that Eric and Laverne are going to be able to join us for that. But everything's going really well. I've been very busy trying to talk to people about the amendments and basically just saying, I don't care which way you come down on it, but please vote, become involved, that is your right as a WBCCI member. That's it.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Region 8?
Nine.
Oh, nine, I'm sorry. Region nine? No comment, no report. Okay, then. Region 8 now?
Yes, Region 8, we just finished our region rally, thanks to Linda for joining us. We had a good time, it was not quite as well attended as region rallies in the past. But for next year, we've already got advanced registrations that are astronomical in numbers. So we're looking good and that's really all we have to report. I'm personally on the way to Colorado and for the springtime in the Rockies caravan. And I noticed, we'll get in tomorrow night, that Estes Park Friday will have a high of 30 and a low of nine. So I'm trying to figure out how my trailer is going to react to that possible snow. So anyway, that's my report.
Do me a favor, just keep it out there, I don't want to see it in Buffalo, okay?
Okay.
Region 7?
Hi, everyone, good, really good to see you. We just pulled in last night after over almost 1,100 miles driving to attend the Minnesota rally. We had 75 Region 7 members there, had an excellent meeting. And we planned a miniature Region 7 rally, September 22 to 25. And we have no international officers who even will be near us, so it's just the way that one goes. Next year, Ginger, First Vice President, has started planning for a region rally. And I have one question for Karen Fisher, if she's on board here. If she can unmute, of course.
I'm here.
Just kidding. Do we have a foundation member either from Greg, seven or eight?
Yes, Jane Bartlett is your Region 8 representative.
So see y'all in Freiburg. Goodbye.
Region 6?
I, I just want to thank Karen for bringing forth that motion, Sense for Youth. There's been a pot of money sitting there for quite a while and there's, Region 6 has traditionally been the ones who've donated the most to it. And I hear a great deal about that. They want to know how come the money's not spent, it's not helping anybody sitting there. So Karen, thanks very much for bringing that forward, let's put that money to good use. Thank you.
Thank you. Region 5?
Good, good morning, everybody, John Deegan here, reporting from the Old National Road caravan. We're currently in Richmond, Indiana. And I'd just like to report that our, our registration is now open for the Region 5 rally, September 14 through 18. And that will be at Madison, Indiana, it's right on the Ohio River. And the same weekend, we are there, vintage Thunder Racing boats will be on the Ohio River. So it should be a pretty exciting rally for all participants and thank you very much, Ty.
Thank you. Region 4?
Hello, Region 4, this is Brad Briggs from Region 4. We are in the throes of our current rally and looking forward to seeing Ty towards the end of the week, I believe. You are coming.
If everything goes right with my truck, my truck's in the shop right now, but I'm planning on being there Friday.
Okay, and I apologize for my tardiness, but we were meeting with the conference center manager at the time this started. So I appreciate everybody's patience and I'm looking forward to a great rally this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Region 3?
Thank you, Ty. Well, we had 125 rigs in Hiawassee at our rally in April. I want to thank Karen Fisher for being there with us. She was also very helpful in doing our explanations concerning motion two. I would like to remind everyone that Galax, the Old Fiddler's Convention Rally in Galax, Virginia, takes place the first week of August, I don't have that exact date in front of me, but it's on the way home from Freiburg if you happen to be heading south. So you can take that into consideration, I'm sure that the Bombs would love to have you sign up for that. The temperatures when we arrived at Hiawassee were in the 70s. The temperature when we left Hiawassee were in the 70s. And the temperature for all of the days that we were rallying was in the 40s. So you know, sometimes things just work out that way, but we had a good time nonetheless. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Region 2?
Hello, I'm sitting here in a campground in Delaware, watching some WDCU members play cornhole across the way. We have the Region 2 rally starting later this week and I think Per is planning to attend. So we're looking forward to that and I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Region 1?
Hello, all. We had our region gathering at the Sandwich Fairground, Sandwich, New Hampshire, which is about 35 miles from Freiburg. And I know there are at least two or three groups planning to rally there before Freiburg. And I want to report that all is in order at the Sandwich Fair. And on behalf of everyone in Region 1 and particularly Ty Moat, I wanted to look forward to welcoming you all to International Rally in Freiburg. It's going to be a great event, the weather is going to be perfect, I've seen the early forecast, so come along.
It'll be good sleeping weather at nighttime, I guarantee you it's not going to be too hot. Okay, let's go to, let's see, Lori Plummer?
I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay. The next one would be, let's do Eric. We'll hop around.
Sorry, I was, I was muted there. Yeah, I just have to say, I, I thought this is a wonderful discussion. You know, I, I look back on past years and you know, the, we haven't had, I think it's many good, robust discussions with the board. So I'm, I think it's great. I think it's really good. I, I just wanted to say a couple of other things. I, I don't know if you guys have taken a look at the third quarter results that Lori sent out a while ago. I think it's important that we start looking at that, we're going to be starting looking at our 22, 23 fiscal year budget shortly. To take a look at the membership growth, I think Lori has stated a couple of times that our membership count is higher than it's been in, I don't know how many years. We're on the up, still going up, which is great news, but we have to develop a balanced budget for the upcoming fiscal year and leave a little bit in reserve, just in case the growth doesn't continue to be this steep. I think all of us expect that the growth that our membership will probably not be this steep in the future because some of it is pandemic, but, but anyway. And the last thing is that on Thursday, there's another round table, I guess we're calling it, on the constitutional amendment number two mainly. And I encourage everyone that if you have questions or if your members have questions, really submit them. And we did a kind of a, a planning discussion yesterday, Ty and Andy and Don and, and a couple of the people. And Jim, and we, we got to make sure that, that the questions that people are asking really get brought up at that meeting. The group on that round table is going to be probably 95% in question answering mode as opposed to stating things. And so it's really dependent on the questions to come in and especially the ones that people consider the cause. I, I think all of you have probably read some parts of the social media discussions. And for anyone who has a potential con or question, make sure that they ask it, that they bring it up, post it ahead of time. We just want to make sure that every question gets answered and that will be the focus of it, there's nothing hidden. So anyway, I'm just asking all of you to either send your questions in, if you have them still, they haven't been answered, or ask the people that you speak to to, hey, look, call in, dial them in, send them in, this is exactly what this is for. So thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you, Eric. Per?
Yeah, looking forward to join Region 2 and we're heading, heading out tomorrow morning. Another point here is that we've narrowed down the sites for the 2024 rally to one. And I hope that emotionally put forth the IBT for the 16th of August meeting with more details. And for the venue, we have, we have two potential dates and depending on how the voting goes. Oh, shaking her head. All right, then. More details to follow. That's it for me.
You shaking her head? Yes, Per, you got it right. Okay, then, let's go to Karen.
I want to thank Region 3 and Region 9 for inviting me to their rallies. I had a great time at both of them, enjoyed meeting all the people and renewing some old friendships. And I'm looking forward to being at the Region 4 rally this week. That's all I have.
Thank you. Let's go to, let's say Linda next, I know you're biting at the bit to say something, Linda.
Well, I just want to thank Region 8 for such a fun time and I got new dishes. I got a new kitchen when I got home and they had the, what did, was that, an auction? Yeah, an auction. And so I got new dishes and so I'm a happy little camper. Thank you, Greg, I really enjoyed it.
That's good. Let's go to Andy?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, then. Let's see, who else we got left? Joanne?
I have nothing to say at this time.
Okay, did I miss anybody that, from the EC?
Trevor.
Oh, Trevor Lake, yes, where's Trevor at? There he is.
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay, I guess it's down to me then, I just want to thank everybody for being here today. I am headed out to Region 4 on Friday if my truck is done, they still haven't contacted me yet, I just texted them again to make sure, so hopefully I'll be leaving Thursday night from here. And then after that, we will be headed back to Jackson Center, Ohio for Memorial Day weekend for the Heritage Center, with most of the EC will be coming in from that. We're looking for a great time there and it's going to be a lot of fun. And then the Heritage Center will be opened up to the public if everything goes according to plan with COVID regulations and stuff. So I want to thank everybody for today's discussion, it's been a very good discussion, okay? I know we all didn't get the answers we wanted or hoped for, but at least we're talking and we're making choices together.
So everybody. Good job, Ty. Yeah.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day and we will see everybody on, hopefully, Thursday, everybody will call in. I was on that panel, it is a lot of questions that we're looking forward to answering, so please call your questions in or email them. Thank you. Have a good one.